Councilmember Mike Cerro.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Grady. Councilmember Dan Grous. Deputy Mayor Al Jenkey.
I'm here.
Mayor Jim Pearman.
Here. Great, and thank you for coming this evening. Before we start, we do have a special presentation tonight. If we could have another new Eagle Scout on Mercer Island, we'd like to extend our congratulations to, a job well done. And if I could have Eagle Scout, is it Taylan Yuassa? Is that correct?
Taylan.
Taylan, excuse me. Taylan, please come forward and introduce yourself to the city council. And I've also asked you to tell a little bit about your Eagle Scout project. And I've never seen so many badges on a Sash before. How many do you have there?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six? Wow. That is a gold palm plus.
Yeah. I haven't earned any palms yet, but I'll be eligible for my first bronze palm in about a month.
Right, and that's the, so those who don't know, 21 is required to be an Eagle, 5 is a bronze, additional 5, additional 5 is a silver, additional 5 is a gold, correct?
Uh, yeah.
That's impressive. But please, introduce yourself to the council.
I'm Taylan Yuassa from Troop 252, and I got my Eagle Scout in late December.
And about your Eagle Scout project?
Oh, um, okay, so it was a donation drive for Operation Night Watch. It is a homeless shelter located in Seattle. And the founder was Reverend Bud Palmberg, who lives on the island and he, at the Mercer Island Covenant Church. And his wife actually came into one of my donation spots on, at Rite Aid, I think, or no, Albertson's. And she was just shopping there, and she was glad to see that the Boy Scouts were helping out for my projects. So, she was very pleased about that.
Great. And also, you're a very accomplished wrestler. And your record is?
Twenty-one and two since regionals, which were pretty recent. And then my record from districts for the middle school was nineteen and O.
Congratulations. I think you're gonna have a big future with whatever you choose to do. But congratulations, and please come forward.
So has a high school wrestling coach recruited you, yes?
I've been going to their practices, and then I also went to their last practice pretty recently, too. And, yeah.
Any universities yet? No, I guess. Please come forward, yeah.
Great, and here's a letter that we'd like to present to you, behalf of the council. And then this is our official city pin that we wear as council members, and we'd like to have you add that to your collection of everything else. Congratulations, wonderful accomplishment there.
Thank you.
Yes. Of course, you have one last task. Would you please introduce your family to everyone? Because you didn't get here alone.
Okay. This is my dad, Mark Yuassa. Hi. My mom, Jeanne Chang. And my other brother, T. D. Yuassa, he's gonna do the rest of it, too.
Great. Well, thanks for coming. This is a big thing, and as a past Eagle, an old Eagle, it's something that you carry with.
Age, or go individually to the 11 corrections or amendments?
Um, why don't you, you know, I haven't had a chance to, did you send that out?
I did, I just got in from, out of town.
I just got in out of town, too. That's why I'm dressed like I am. So what would you like to do? Do you want to go through them? Are they major changes to the document, or how long do you have to go through?
Jim, let me suggest, I looked at the first three or four of them, and I can't claim to understand them. So I think we'd better take them individually, and whether they're major or not, I guess it's up to Mr. Cerro, but I'm not sure I get it.
Okay, that's fine. I'll take them individually, then.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the First Amendment I'd like to make is, corresponding to the sheet on number one, it's on page two, paragraph beginning with "City Manager."
Okay.
Change, "The Ford Thrust Pool is near the end of its life expectancy is the only public." Change that to, "The Ford Pool is the only public swimming pool on the island." And then that sets up, to append at the end of that sentence, "The KG Design Review of the Pool Systems determined the pool worthy of short-term investments after the high school grounds," per, uh, sentence. And what that does is, if I may speak to it.
Yeah, please.
You need a second first.
Okay. These are, and just for clarification, these are just minutes of the meeting, we're not adding or detracting from what was said. So if it wasn't communicated at the meeting, then...
Well, I think it was communicated, and as it's written here, it's kind of as statement of fact, but it's indeed, on what I said and what was presented in the packet, I think it's a little bit not representative of the facts.
Okay.
So again, I'll go over the...
Is there a second to discuss it, then?
Is there a second to amendment?
Amendment.
I mean, he's got a list of 11 amendments here, and I think we gotta take them one at a time.
Right, that's what we're doing.
And...
I'm not all clear on this, but I will second it, see that you have...
Okay. We're gonna go one at a time.
All right. Thank you. So on the packet, on the packet that we had and that we discussed, the packet, the handout produced by Mr. Ocampo does indeed say, "The Mary Way Pool is nearing the end of its useful life," as said in the minutes. But as I pointed out, and as the, in the KG Design Consultant Presentation or Review of the Pool, he says, on his first page, when he summarizes, kind of the executive summary, that the KG Design Review of the Pool Systems determine the pool worthy of short-term investments versus, as is paraphrased on Mr. Ocampo's summary, that it's near the end of its life expectancy. And the consultant report actually gives that the piping is good if it's maintained for another 10 years, the HV can be maintained, the boiler can be maintained. So I pointed out that it's, its end of life expectancy was not correct, and then I also pointed, as my basis of saying that, the consultant's report. I do remember saying that during the planning session.
Mike, as your, as your secondor, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
And I make this to everybody, but, and this is in part for your sake and in part for mine, because I have a correction as well, and I'm struggling with the language of that. But could I suggest that we have a second version of this? We punt on this for tonight, and we have a second version of this written with these changes in it, so that we can read the two versions side by side, and actually, it's very difficult, I think, to try and figure out what this would look like with that stuff integrated into it. And so we'll just move it to the next meeting with two versions of it that we can look at.
Actually, Mr. Bassett, I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay, so with that...
I'd like the motion that we table this till the next meeting after the revisions are reviewed by the staff.
Okay.
We need to deal with the motion on the table, so you can rescind the motion, if you like.
We've got a motion that you're gonna have to clear. So in other words, you can take your motion back, and the secondor can take it back, and then we can push this forward.
I'll rescind the motion.
No, it's been seconded, and I think what we have to do is vote it down and then proceed. And I think before we table anything, we should be clear on what we expect staff to do when they come back with it, rather than just, you know, what kind of revisions. With the Cerro-proposed amendments in a different color, or underlined or something, and then Bruce's proposed modification wherever it underlines. So when we get it back, we can see what's being added or deleted.
Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, so it sounds like that works. All right, so...
Councilmember Cerro can simply rescind his amendment, and Deputy Mayor Jenkey can rescind his motion, and they're off the table.
Well, I'm not going to, so let's vote it down and proceed.
Yeah. Actually, we don't have to vote, we can just rescind it.
I'll rescind mine.
And the secondor's gotta also incur.
Well, Jim, I just said I'm not gonna rescind my second, so let's vote down the motion.
He was the second.
I thought I was the second.
No. Bruce wasn't. Okay, so it's done now, okay? So now, we basically are saying, we're gonna send this back to staff with the suggested changes. That's Bruce. Anyone who's got suggested changes, get them to the staff, and we'll put them in, so we can look at that. Is that fair? That was your suggestion, correct?
And, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, there's still the main motion on the table to approve the minutes, and I think that's what Councilmember Jenkey was alluding to.
Right, okay, that's...
Let's vote on the, on the motion.
So we got rid of the amendment. Now what we're doing is, we're back to the main motion, now you're...
So who seconded the main motion?
Councilmember Bassett seconded the main motion.
Okay.
Just vote on it, just vote on it.
So then, what do we have to do with that, then?
You have two choices.
Yeah.
You can vote on the motion.
Right.
Or Councilmember, or, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Jenkey can rescind his motion if Councilmember Bassett agrees it's off the table.
What would you like to do?
Or you can move.
You wanna vote on it? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay, okay, it fails. All right, that's cleared off, then, and it'll come back next council, next council meeting. Now we have the regular meeting minutes of February 7th. Do we have a motion? And, you know, our new council member needs to make her first motion.
I would like to make a slight correction.
Okay. You can make the motion first, though.
Yeah.
I, I move that we, well, I don't know how to correct the...
Make the motion first, then we'll correct.
Oh, okay, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of February 7th, 2011.
Well done. Do we have a second? Second? Okay, now, floor's yours.
Very small correction on the Arch 2011 Work Program. Councilman Cerro moved, and Councilman Cerro seconded.
He was a superstar that night. Councilmember Cerro did bring that to my attention. I reviewed the tape, and it is Councilmember Grady. So that's a Scrivener error. It has been changed, so that the final version will have the correction.
Thank you.
Okay, any other changes? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, it passes. Consent calendar, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Still moving.
Okay, second?
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion?
I'd like to discuss a little bit on, let's see, are we doing the accounts payable on this part?
Yep.
Okay, yes. On, on the second last page of the first APs, on the advanced construction, CCMV office remodel, first payment at $20,000, $21,000, $2,805. There's a bit of frustration to me when I see something like this on an office remodel for a relatively new building, when we're, when we're deferring maintenance on our City Hall, and also doing multiple cuts that may even hit services to our citizens. There's a frustration when I see that, that I know we're getting it, but are we getting it? And I just wanted to say that, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, going on to regular business, we have Agenda Bill 4598, the Arts Council Annual Report, and we have got... Who's presenting today on this?
I am.
This is Amber, there we go, there you are, Amber.
I got up and then I sat down.
I didn't see you when I walked in.
Amber Britton, Parks and Recreation Department, Staff Liaise on to the Arts Council. I have Jane Disler with me, she's the current Arts Council Vice Chair. She's gonna report to you on the hard-working year that the Arts Council has had, and we'll both be available for any questions at the end that you might have for us. So Jane?
I actually, whoops, I'm so short. I actually was the chair during the year 2010, and so this is our annual report. Currently, I am the Public Art Chair and the Vice Chair, so I can back up our brand-new chairman. During the end of 2009, we had a, had a meeting and changed our bylaws, and we decided that we were going to do a number of things different. And one of those was that we limited the length of term for the Chair and the Vice Chair. Other things we definitely put in, and we followed our changes, the things that we decided we were gonna do, we actually did during 2010. The year 2010 was the 50th anniversary of the city, but it was the 25th anniversary of the Arts Council. So all year, we tried to have a few kind of celebrations that at least mentions of the 25th anniversary. And then we ended up in August doing a big celebration that we combined with one of the Third Thursday's Downtown. And we had three bands, and we had karaoke, and we had great participation from a couple of the business people who paid for karaoke, that one of the places paid for the band. And we also invited all of the original Arts Council members to come. And not all of them could come, but several did. And also, a couple of the people who were staff, or were, one of them was the mayor at that time, who came. So that was very exciting for us. And one of the other things that was very important for us, has been for several years, finally, we got our banners taken care of. They were all ready to go by the end of 2010, and I think some of you have probably seen that they're beginning to be installed downtown. They, there will be many more. At this point, we have to wait for blocks of installation to come. But check them out and see if you don't think that they're nice. Also, I wanted to say that Mostly Music in the Park and Shakespeare in the Park had very successful years last year. We had extremely good attendance, and with Mostly Music especially, it was, we were able to break even, or almost break even. So we're gonna aim for that again this year. And then we had a new partnership with Aljoya for the literary component. We have films there, and we have some lecture series there, and they are picking up a great part of the bill as well, as well as they do wonderful parties. They really are very, very, very generous. Then the indoor gallery had some very good, successful shows. The outdoor gallery's been on hold, though, for a while because of the economy and for some other considerations. But one of the things that did happen was that some of the other pieces around the island were repaired and restored. You probably have even noticed that, especially the one that's in Pioneer Park at the south end. You can now tell what it is and what it was supposed to be. So we ended up the year on a good note, and particularly because when we came to the council for our budget for this year, we had our funds restored, albeit from 1% for the arts, which we, we ourselves hope that it will not have to happen again. But thank you.
Great.
If there's any questions, we can answer them for you.
Great. Any questions? Yeah.
Yeah, I got a couple, just by way of clarification here. On page 12, on Exhibit 1, it looks like, if I'm looking at this correctly, the budgeted deficit, the difference between revenues and expenses was $68,000 to 13, and the actual was 59,247. Is that correct?
This is what actually got deposited by the end of the year. We are missing an $8,000 revenue grant that we just haven't received the check for, so...
That would mean...
We have that.
The deficit would be $51,000.
It would be less.
So I just wanted to confirm that. So the general fund contribution to the arts activities was budgeted at $68,000, then, for 2010?
I was budgeted $109,000.
Well, that, it looks like that was the budgeted expense, but the budgeted revenue offsets that, so the difference there.
Oh, right, yeah. They've, they've, it's not been...
So we came in, basically, the numbers were $9,000 to the good, basically.
Yeah.
And the deficit was $9,000 smaller, and I, and that leads the, what is the, what are the numbers for 2011 in terms of revenues and expenses from the adopted budget?
I don't have that number with me, but it is...
I know we have it here in this, budget that's stirring us all in the face, but I...
We try to keep the same ratio from, like, we didn't increase anything for this year, so the numbers should be very similar to what it was. And the Arts Council's just making every effort they can to reduce their spending. And when they see that we're not gonna make the revenue, they reduce that even more. So, like, the gallery shows this year were pretty low compared to what the past couple years have been for our gallery sales, so then they try to offset how much they're spending on that.
So how does the proposed program for 2011 compare to what you did in 2010?
As far as what we budgeted on expenses?
And revenues?
It's gonna, I would say, the expenses, we pretty much budgeted the same. We changed how things are getting spent, but the overall number. And on the revenues, we tried to come up with a more accurate reflection, like the gallery, for instance. It said some ridiculously high number that we haven't met in, like, five years, so we lowered what that revenue was really gonna be, to be more of an average of what we had for the couple, last couple of years. But I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
So what you're saying is, basically, we budgeted for about a $60,000 deficit for this year, for this...
Yeah, it's never been budgeted as a break even, so there is definitely support from the general fund on, you know, just not being a break even budget.
Also, one other question on staff hours. Last year, there were 900 staff hours devoted to the Arts Council, and magically, that's the budget for this year, and so the same staff commitment this year as last year?
Yeah, we...
Staff time?
That was a number that came from the city council, as far as not exceeding that number, so we just don't exceed that number. We...
So, but you never, it looks like you hit it right on the button, too.
We try really hard. We do, I, you know, I, now, when I took this position, I was told the percentage of my hours that could be dedicated to the Arts Council. And the Arts Council's fantastic, it's stepping up. When we get to the point where we're like, hey, guys, you know, you're asking too much, we can't spend any more time on it, they start stepping in and doing a little bit more. So they've been a great team on that effort.
Any other questions? Right, seeing none, thank you very much. Jane, thank you very much for coming. Appreciate all your hard work. The Arts Council, as Dan, if he were here, will tell you, is one of the most active working boards that we have. And Jane is now the new representative, yes?
I will tell you that as the new Arts Council liaison, I'm thrilled to be assigned to this group. I went to my first meeting a couple weeks ago and got to meet most of the members, and it is a very hard-working. They don't just sit back, they, they dig in and do a lot. And they have really, I think to the benefit of all of us, cultivated partnerships among the community with, you know, as Jane mentioned, organizations like MyVal, businesses like Aljoya, number of banks, the Chamber of Commerce, and that just helps strengthen their programs and spread the wealth and the fun, I should say. And so they've done a very good job. And do notice the banners, they're up, I counted about a dozen of them today, and they'll be a lot more, very colorful and a nice addition to our town center.
And it's also customary for the liaison to make a motion when they're...
Oh, I move, I move that we accept the report of the Arts Council.
Great. Great, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Great. Once again, thank you very much. And I guess the post, the note to everyone is, go down and look at art in the community center and buy some this next year, right? Is that the sales pitch? Did I get it right? Okay, thanks again. With that, we'll move on, then, to Agenda Bill 4609, First Hill Water Improvement. And Chip, you've got the floor, please.
Great, thank you. For the record, Chip Quarter, your Finance Director. We're here for the first reading of the bond ordinance related to the First Hill Water System improvements. There's also a booster pump station upgrade associated with that. I briefed the council on this at your planning, planning session back in January, and at the last council meeting on February 7th. With me is Deanna Gregory, our Bond Counsel from K&L Gates. We're missing our fiscal advisor, financial advisor, Dick Shober from Seattle Northwest. I hope he's okay. In any case, happy to take any questions the council has regarding the ordinance. I know Councilmember Jenkey, Deputy Mayor Jenkey has some questions, and I'll invite Deanna to, up to answer those.
The end of the presentation?
That's it.
Okay. Questions for staff?
Why don't you ask them?
Oh, you did.
You want me just to have...
Anything for public, or... Well, just for everybody's elucidation here, in reading the bond ordinance, I guess my questions are, number one, there are references to bond insurance and credit enhancements and liquidity providers and such things. And I guess it was my understanding, given our city's credit rating, we didn't need bond insurance, and because bond insurance is not free, there's an extra cost to that, and that's certainly something we want to avoid if, at all possible. So why do we have a section on bond insurance and these rather, you know, loaded references to credit enhancements and liquidity provisions, which could mean anything and everything these days?
Let me take a quick shot at the bond insurance. So, and Deanna, feel free to correct me if I go off-base here. It's boilerplate, it doesn't apply to us because of our credit rating, it's outstanding, there won't be people bidding with an expectation of bond insurance. And so I suppose your next question is, why don't we just delete it?
[laughing].
Please.
And the answer is?
I'm happy to answer that. I'm Deanna Gregory with K&L Gates. As Chip mentioned, thank you for having me here tonight. The reason why we don't delete it, even though Chip is absolutely correct, given the rating of the city's bond rating on its LTGO obligations, as well as the current condition of the bond insurers at this moment, they're, as I'm sure you've been hearing in the news for the last couple of years, they've been downgraded themselves, or they're having quite a difficulty, a lot of difficulty in the, in the market right now. The reason why we keep this language in there is just in case. Given the nature of the market, it's so volatile, the only reason why, and again, this is a question that's appropriate for Dick as well, as your financial advisor, but we leave the language in just in case, on the day of pricing, the stars line up in a way where it does make financial sense for the city to pursue bond insurance. There is no way that we would recommend, and neither would your financial advisor would recommend, to pursue bond insurance unless it saves the city money. And that's why we leave it in, just in case. But you're absolutely right.
So therefore, my question, since the parameters we put on this are $1,750,000 in a par amount, and a maximum true interest cost of five and a half...
Correct.
You would add any call, any possible potential bond insurance to the true interest cost in determining whether or not we were under the five and a half percent limit?
Right, it would have to reduce your interest rate to an sufficient amount to not only be within that five and a half percent, but also to offset the premium costs. You also mentioned credit enhancements and liquidity, and I'm assuming you're talking about the material events listed on page, it's my page 35.
Yes, that's correct.
And the reason why, and this is, is worth mentioning separately, the reason why liquidity and credit enhancements are listed here, because these are material events that, for federal securities laws, the city is required to provide notice to the market in, upon the occurrence of these events. This is straight out of SEC Rule 15C-212, and we do not tinker with this language, so to speak, to change it. So even though you're absolutely right, there's, there's no liquidity, no credit enhancement in terms of letters of credit or other types of security or credit for your, these bonds, but we leave this language in here because it's straight out of the statute, Rule 15C-212. And actually, in your official statement, in your preliminary official statement, we'll make a notice to bondholders, so it makes it very, very clear that even though these material events are listed, it's clear to a potential bondholder and other potential investors that there in fact are no, assuming that there are no, no bond insurance, there's no credit enhancement or liquidity. no... Assuming that there are no bond insurance, there's no credit enhancement or liquidity providing security for your bonds.
Okay. And also, we don't plan to have any sinking fund related to this bond, do we?
That would be a structure, and that would be a term bond question. I don't think so.
It's awfully short, isn't it? What's the term on this? Although, these are 20 years.
These are 20 years.
It's 20 years. It's going to be 20 years, right?
I don't believe in the preliminary numbers that we have seen, that there are any term bonds with sinking funds tied to them. I think they're all serials at this point.
Any other questions for staff? Yeah, Mike?
Mr. Mayor, on page 27, Section 8, where it talks about the application of bond proceeds, the very last part, may be transferred to the bond fund. Is that the same as paying down the bond?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Do we have a motion, then?
Yeah, I'll move that we set ordinance number 11-03 to the March 7, 2011 council meeting for a second reading and final adoption.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion?
I have an amendment.
Okay, amendment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the amendment on page 27, Section 8, at the end, the last paragraph, or the last sentence there. Any part of the proceeds of the bonds remaining in the project fund, after all costs of the projects have been paid, including costs of issuance, will be transferred to the bond fund. Basically, what that does is that deletes the option to use these funds for a capital purpose.
Okay. Is there a second?
Excuse me.
27.
Section 8.
Section 8. Basically, he's saying that... It doesn't move the general fund, goes to repay the bonds.
Here again, I'll second this for the purposes of discussion.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Bassett, for the purpose of discussion.
Mike, forgive me, just let me make sure I understand the language correctly. If I understand correctly, all you're doing is omitting for any capital purpose of the city?
That's correct. And the purpose...
Okay, yes, thank you.
So, my discussion on this. What I want to do is limit these funds just for this project. And no doubt, there will be funds remaining after this project is complete, because it would be silly to estimate a bond that is just short of the finish line. So, I'm sure that it's... We have additional monies, and that we'll have a surplus after this bond is finished. In the name of fiscal responsibility and fiscal frugality, if you will, I would like the monies that's identified in this bond, the surplus, to go back into paying the bond off versus giving this council or future councils the opportunity to do something else with this money that no doubt will be legitimate, if you will, but nevertheless, won't go through the rigor or the review process that we are with this project. Again, the intent is to help with fiscal responsibility and frugality, and the monies, the surplus, that's not used for this bond, it goes down to paying the bond off.
Can I ask? I'd like to just ask staff for a sense of how language is normally done on these, and what's your sense of how you would normally operate, or what your thoughts are on this?
This is standard language. It does give us flexibility. That is the intent. And as a matter of practice, however, if there's excess proceeds, you know, typically, my first reflex is to use it to pay down the debt. Occasionally, it's not even occasionally, it's less than that, it's more seldom, there are... And in this particular case, this would be for water utility capital purposes, not for... I wouldn't be using it for other general government, you know, capital purposes, water utility, all about that. And so, adjusting the language is unusual. This is really common language, and that's the spirit with which I take it, is I would use it for that purpose, and if there's excess, I would use it to pay down the debt.
So, Chip, you raise an interesting question here. Normally, these would be revenue bonds and not the GOs. But they're GOs with a full faith and credit. Does that still mandate that all bond proceeds stay in the water utility?
No. In essence, what it does, this allows us to get a little better interest rate in normal...
No, I understand that. But this is that, at the end of the day, after we sold the bonds, do we have the flexibility, based on there being GO, general obligations of the city?
Yes.
And not water revenue bonds? Do we have the legal ability to utilize bond proceeds left over outside the water utility?
Yes.
Yes, you do. And I'm just going to draw your attention to Section 2, the second paragraph of Section 2 on page 14, which essentially says that, in the event that there are excess proceeds, after all costs of the project have been completed, then the council, in its discretion, will determine how the bond proceeds are used, if they're used in other capital projects. We need to have the flexibility to use the proceeds to pay down the bonds. That's a piece of federal tax law to allow us to comply with the tax code. But I think, for all sense and purposes, if... And I can let Chip talk to this as well, but if there are excess proceeds, given the language in Section 2, the proceeds will not be used on other projects unless the council approves those projects.
And I recognize that, and that's my concern, because I know that we will find other projects to use that and expand the different projects that we're doing. And it's my intent that with this money that we're paying interest on, the intent of the motion is that we don't do that. We've identified a project, we've taken out the money for it, we identify the surplus, and we put the surplus back into paying that bond off, and we move on to the next project in the normal review process.
Just had one other thought, just kind of a little perspective. Occasionally, what happens is you get a fabulous construction bid, and so that's less than the amount that was envisioned for the bonds. And this kind of flexibility gives you, you know, allows you to address other needs that may be out there. And that's kind of the thinking behind it. I understand with what you're trying to say, the reality is, in this particular case, First Hill has a lot of water improvement needs that go beyond even this project. And they're planned out over a six-year period of time. But as Deanna said, we would come back to the council. If that were the case, if we got a fabulous bid that was less than the $1.58 million-plus bond issuance costs, we'd come back to the council and talk to the council about this excess and what to do with it. Again, my first reflex would be use it to pay down the debt.
And I appreciate that, Director Quirter. And I appreciate that that's probably what you would do. But it's a council's... It ends up being a council's decision, and I have more confidence in you than the council as the body. Sorry.
Well, not sure you want to go there.
I'm included in that. I'm included in that. And that's the reason and motivation in my amendment, is to...
Reduce flexibility.
Again, limit where the surplus goes.
Okay. Any more discussion on the amendment?
Well, I have a comment, but first of all, I guess I'm not clear, Chip, on my question about if we have extra proceeds left over after the project's done, do those proceeds have to stay in the water utility?
No.
No. Because I think you may... If the answer's no, and I think you made a very good point about all the needs that go far above and beyond this particular project in the water utility, I might be comfortable in leaving any excess bond proceeds in the water utility. But you're now saying, well, no, they don't have to stay in the water utility, and that's a different issue.
Let me invite Bond Counsel up. The way I view this, again, since we're not doing revenue bonds, and there is greater flexibility in the use of those proceeds, though we do identify the projects for which they're intended, it's water utility rates that are paying the debt service on these bonds is the bottom line, backed by the full faith and credit of the city. And you understand that. But we'll be charging the water utility customers and we're surrounding the principal and interest on this bond. I would advise against using any excess for the sewer utility, or I'd be less concerned about using it for another utility, much more concerned about using it for a general government purpose, such as a building or what have you.
Well, I would agree with you. I think I was... I guess we're moving to comments now, and I would support Mike's motion, but I think Chip makes an excellent point about all the unmet future needs in the water utilities that go far beyond the First Hill project that these bonds are going to finance. So, I would be supportive of just a provision that says, any excess bond proceeds have to stay within the water utility for water utility projects, rather than mandating they go to the bond fund. But Chip has pointed out, these are not revenue bonds, they're general obligations. So, in theory, and maybe in practice, the council will say, well, we'll take it and do whatever we want with it. And I think we need the discipline to at least have the part of this ordinance that any excess proceeds stay in a water utility, since there are extensive needs that go beyond this financing.
Okay.
So, if I look at the language on page 27, and I listen to Councilmember Jenke, I wonder if, at the end of Section 8, it would make sense to have an alternative language that would be between the words "any" and "capital." So, in the next to last line there, it said... The line would read, "including costs of issuance," may be used for any water utility capital purpose of the city.
That would make sense to me. I think any, yeah, water utility capital project, yeah.
And I would be supportive of that language.
Well, I could tell you, procedurally, what we need to do is, we have a motion amendment, and it's been seconded. So, we're going to... If you want to make that change, we're going to have to vote that down, and then someone's got to put forward a second, another amendment, okay? I'm inclined to support personally this revised wording to keep it within the water utility. I'm not prepared to support the current amendment as proposed. Would anyone else like to speak on it? Jane, would you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I think that we should restrict the... Well, keep the wording to "will be used for any water utility purpose of the city or transferred to the bond fund."
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
What the council giveth, the council can take it away, and what the council take it away, I think the council can give it. So, by putting that amendment, or something to that effect, by putting that amendment in there, does that have... Does that make the council legally bound for keeping it in the water utility fund? Or in the future, council's infinite wisdom, could they change that and make it a general fund?
Mike, I think the answer is, yeah, we're bound, because we've represented this to the bond buyers.
Great.
Okay. So, any more discussion on the amendment as...
So, no, is Mike's amendment seconded?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of Mike's amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, it fails? Does someone have another amendment they'd like to put forward?
I would propose to amend page 27, Section 8. I don't know what line that is, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Line 8, to insert the words "water utility" between the words "any" and "capital."
I'll second that. Okay, discussion?
Will it be necessary to change, let's see, Section 2, the middle paragraph, to correspond in any way with the change we just made?
I think that's a staff question.
The council may apply the bond proceeds or any portion thereof to the redemption of the bond or to other capital purposes, as the council, in its discretion, shall determine. Should this be changed as well?
If it would make you feel comfortable?
Is it needed?
To be consistent?
I would recommend doing it.
Okay. All right, so, I think we've got to vote on this one, then we're going to have to have another amendment to amend that. Okay? So, then, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. And I think we need a second amendment. Jane, would you like to...
Yes, I would like to amend Section 2, Paragraph 2, to read, "If the projects have been acquired or constructed or duly provided for or found to be impractical, the council will apply the bond proceeds or any portion thereof to the redemption of bonds or to any water utility purpose that the council, in its discretion, shall determine."
Should that be water capital? This is a capital, isn't it?
Yes, water, yes.
Okay, we need a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. So, Ally, could you read that back? Could you... No, you can't.
I'm still trying to find out where you're reading from, Councilmember Brown.
Okay. That's page 14, okay? Section 2. And it's the final section of that. And in the last bit, "The council may apply the bond proceeds or any portion thereof to the redemption of the bonds or to other water utility capital purposes, as the council, in its discretion, shall determine." Is that correct?
Correct.
Let's just make sure, because I know Jane said "council will," rather than she changed "may" to a "will" in the middle of line 4.
Okay.
Yes.
And she changed "other" to "any" in line 5. And I am somewhat ambivalent about which language to use, but I just would point out that that's what you said, and then Jim, you said something else. So, let's just be clear.
I was just trying to...
Yeah, let's just be...
Yeah, I used the word "will" to correspond with the stronger "will" in the previous amendment we just approved.
Okay.
But I didn't propose "will" in the previous amendment. You mentioned it, but I did not propose it, and so it did not become part of the previous amendment.
Oh.
Well, sounds good.
So...
So, we approved "may"?
We did it. We left "may" alone and only added two words. We left...
Well, in that case, I would like to...
Official motion?
Make the official motion that Paragraph 2, Section 2, reads, "If the projects have been acquired or constructed or duly provided for or found to be impractical, the council may apply the bond proceeds or any portion thereof to the redemption of the bonds or to other water capital, capital water utility purposes, as the council, in its discretion, shall determine."
Water utility capital?
Purposes, yes.
Water utility.
Water utility capital, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ally, did you get that one?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. And just to make sure, Ally, could you read that back, because we've been going back and forth?
The last sentence of Paragraph 2 of Section 2 reads, "If the projects have been acquired or constructed or duly provided for or found to be impractical, the council may apply the bond proceeds or any portion thereof to the redemption of the bonds or to other water utility capital purposes, as the council, in its discretion, shall determine."
Okay, is that what you said?
Yes.
Great, we have concurrence. Thanks, Ally. All right, discussion on the amendment. Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, that passes. So, going back to the main motion as amended, any more amendments? Okay, seeing none. We've got the main motion as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, we move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And now, our final agenda item tonight, 4603 Hazard Mitigation Plan Adoption. Okay, and we've got Glenn on the deck for this one.
I have just a short presentation this evening, mostly because I want to show you a couple of things that are easier to see on the screen.
I thought you were going to have Officer Franklin do the presentation tonight, huh?
She's here for my backup.
Okay, there you go. Okay, there you go.
What part of the island is that?
That's, that's on West Mercer Way.
So this represents the end of about a year-long process of updating the city's hazard mitigation plan. It's not a plan that is visible to much of the community, but it's an important piece of what we do in the arena of emergency management. It's, it's a cornerstone of a lot of our planning on the capital side, as well as operations. As your agenda bill explained, the first plan was written in late 2004. It's a requirement of the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. And importantly, we need to have a plan to be eligible for FEMA disaster funding, whether to recover the cost of dealing with a disaster, and occasionally also money becomes available for hazard mitigation projects. So having a current plan not only keeps us eligible for FEMA funding, these are some of the other things that it does for us. It, it helps us every several years identify what the potential hazards are on the island. We don't have certainly as long a list as a larger city does, but the ones we have are very real hazards. It requires us to take a look at how vulnerable we really are and what our level of risk is. And then we start doing some high-level planning to be better prepared for problems with these hazards, both on the operational side, as well as the capital project side. And Exhibit 3 in your packet does talk about the hazard evaluation piece, and I might draw your attention in particular to page 10 of Exhibit 4, where the plan reviewed the projects that were identified in 2004. There were 15 altogether, I believe. We've completed seven, pretty good progress for our small city. And the, the most significant by far was the creation of the emergency well. That was a project that was highlighted in the '04 plan, and it helped us create the momentum moving toward actually getting that project completed. One of the interesting things about hazard mitigation plans is they typically have pretty dynamic mapping, and I wanted to share with you an example of one map. These are not maps that we distribute much in the, to the public. There's a Homeland Security implication here. It does identify what we consider to be our key facilities. But this is a map that's new to the plan, that was developed in-house by folks in Development Services that actually won an award last year from the Urban and Regional Information Systems Association. It was a silver medal winner. That's a multiple, multidisciplinary association of GIS professionals. So to mapping people, this was a really good map. And you'll, you'll see the detail that they developed. Don Cole, the building official, told me today, we're one of only three cities in the state to have a map like this, and the other two are Seattle and Tacoma.
Is this part of Google Earth?
Ally, do you know if Mike's still here?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Are you looking for Stefan Sire?
No, this was actually a link in the, in the PowerPoint. And I could certainly send it out after the fact, so you can, you can see the map.
Can you hover over again so I can see where the link is? Close that. Close that. Just hover over that link a little quicker.
Well, we won't delay much longer if we can't find it here in a second. But if Ally isn't successful, I will, I will send it out, because I think some of you would find it interesting. What it does is it shows, it breaks the island down by vulnerability to wind exposure and wind acceleration. The effects of wind acceleration are like the air over an airplane wing. There is an acceleration. So as you would expect, certain areas of the shoreline and inland from the shoreline are in red on this map, which indicate that they are subject to significant wind damage. So it helps Development Services when a redevelopment or new residential development comes in, if they're in an area of particular concern. Thank you, Ally.
You're welcome.
The red part's right over my house.
Well, the red, the red is the area of the greatest concern, and as you would imagine, the, the south end, the, the south end is, is the most susceptible, as we all know, in a big windstorm.
So I guess two questions right off the bat. Is this a function of altitude as well as prevailing wind patterns also?
Yes, and exposure, direct exposure to wind coming off the lake. So homes that are, are being rebuilt or built in that area are required to be built to a, to a different wind standard. That's something on the top of the island that's shown in green. So it helps Development Services. So an architect, an engineer for a, you know, a new home on the island can dial it in on the first try. There are the revisions that used to happen.
One, one, I don't, I guess it's just a comment, but I noticed that earlier this, several weeks ago, we had a wind event, and a number of trees in the ravine area of Pioneer Park, in the northeast quad of Pioneer Park, came down in that. I look at this map, and I think of my own, you know, sense of things, and it's a well-sheltered area. And it, it just raises this kind of question of how do these microburst kinds of events happen? And do we have any way to be accounting for that kind of event when we set these construction codes, or is that just beyond the, you know, ability of anything to calculate?
Yeah, that, that would be a good question for Don, and I'd be happy to ask him that question. I think the issue with Pioneer Park, though, is more about the health or lack of health of the trees that go down. I don't, you know, laminated root rot is the problem that Paul West, the arborist, ArborSpace arborist, is dealing with there, and that, that does weaken the stability of trees. So I think it's, it's significant wind, but they're susceptible, more susceptible than a healthy tree. But they're dealing with a lot of downed trees from the, this winter really started early on, trees going down in the park.
So since we started in the questioning part of it, I have a question. So this tells us something that we didn't know before?
This map is new as of the middle of last year.
I know, but does this tell us anything that we didn't know before?
It graphically demonstrates what we all thought anecdotally, anecdotally to be the case, and this also is a tool that is now used with, for architects and engineers in designing homes.
Okay, so that is my next question. So now DSG, we have different strap requirements and tie-down requirements from DSG, depending upon where they fall in the zone?
Yes. And for the benefit of folks who hopefully are, are watching tonight, you can see the whole plan online. I know Councilmember Meyer-Brom had a little, had a little problem earlier today getting to it, so we may have to work on the link a little bit. But you can get there directly off the website, just by going to Emergency Management.
And it worked great on my Mac, but not my PC.
Wow, that's interesting. So, and actually, she pointed out something to me. We have some typos in the plan that, that we'll need to clean up. The, the original version of the plan referred to the '09 update, and the cover says 2010. We're going to take out all references to the year of the plan. It's not really relevant, you know, it's not important to the plan. On the cover, we'll note the date that it was adopted by the council.
Glenn, that was the only question I had. I mean, it's throughout the plan, it talks about the 2009 plan, and the resolution says 2010, and here we are in 2011. So if five years from 2004 would be 2009, and we're only getting around to it now, what?
Well, yeah, this step in, the last step in the process has been pushed out quite a few times, beginning with the length of the budget process, then your agendas were, were full in January. Basically, we've bought a year. Once this plan, once you approve the resolution, we are in compliance, and a new five-year clock starts.
So we're officially calling it the 2010 plan?
It was, it was really completed, and FEMA gave us the initial, yes, you pass muster in 2010. That's Exhibit 1, your agenda bill. So it will be the 2010 plan.
Okay. Let me kind of ask a question about that, the timing of it, because, you know, reviewing these plans, et cetera, that takes a lot of staff time, and it becomes expensive. And it seems like we were late, almost maybe even two years late, because this was back from FEMA in December, the latter part of December 10. And, I mean, nobody came knocking at my door as a council member that we were late with this. What flexibility do we have in updating not every five years, but maybe every 10 years, in the interest of saving money, saving staff time, and understanding that things might not change that too terribly much?
I can take a high-level, high-level step at that, and then maybe Jennifer Franklin would like to go more into detail. I think, I think the high-level answer is that we really are supposed to try to do it every five years. Technically, we would be out of compliance if there were a disaster for which we sought FEMA funding. We had a plan that was largely drafted by the middle of 2010, and was working through the last of the public involvement and other pieces of the process, state review, then there were comments, then FEMA's initial review. I think at that point, we were essentially in compliance. Jennifer and I talked about that, what if we were having a disaster in November of last year? We don't think that FEMA would have denied us funding. So once we were on the path, we were okay. But I think stretching it to 10 years.
Again, Jennifer Franklin, Emergency Preparedness Officer. You're right, we don't want to be out of compliance with this in terms of any type of grant funding, especially even with this hazard mitigation plan. We did get a grant for this. Once the process has started, then we would be covered. We're in the grant process. But if you start to do something where you're out of compliance, we do have a disaster, we do ask for funds for any type of project, a grant funding, FEMA and the state can deny us.
On these plans, we talk about compliance, but several times I've looked at the way the wording is, or wordings are, wording is on these type of compliance. And there seems like it's not a black and white issue, and that often local governments have flexibility in extending the review process. And it, you might want to check, and I wouldn't mind if you come back to me and verify that it's, every five years, you've got to review it and update it. I might, I wouldn't be surprised if there's flexibility, and maybe you can just, on extending that to the right, and thereby helping us in our, in our, in our finances.
Per FEMA and state, we are required to have the hazard mitigation plan every five years, and the CEMP, the City Emergency Management Plan, every four years.
And there's no wiggle room in that? Is that what you're telling me?
There is no wiggle room in having that done. However, there are some cities that are not in compliance with that, or choose not to be in compliance with that. Well, FEMA does have the option then at that point, if we do have a declared disaster, and we are out of compliance, we decide to go ahead and say, hey, we need our 82.5% back. FEMA can sit there and say, you know what, you're the men on the totem pole. These people are in compliance, we're giving money to them. You're last on our list. And so from our end, especially for something like an earthquake, et cetera, where it's quite devastating, I don't want to be in a situation that we would not be in compliance, and would not have that funding come back to us.
Can you talk a little bit about best available science? And it seems like Councilmember Jenke has some experience with this on the, on the planning commission. Is this best available science balanced off with the expense, how much things cost? Meaning, a policy could be the best outcome, but is that juxtaposed on how much it will cost the community or the government, the local municipality?
I think there is an affordability or a cost-benefit analysis that's these days part of best available science. It wasn't too many years ago, but it is now. Basically, you're not going to be asked to do something that you can't afford. That can't be considered best available science.
And then we had a couple landslides on the island. Primary, I think they were all on East Mercer?
We had a couple, a couple smaller.
Two on East and one on West Mercer?
Yeah, Holly Hill Drive, I think we've had four that we've been tracking altogether, none of which are large or have any significant effect on public infrastructure. They've all been looked at either by our geotech or residents' geotech, and we're just in a monitoring phase. They've mostly been buttoned up, so they're not open to the rain. But there are repairs that are necessary in any significant way.
Well, I mean, they're, they're, they border the Mercers, so they have implications to our infrastructure.
Not at this point. If, if they were, if they were not covered up.
Well, my question, my question, Glenn, is, I didn't see any projects addressing the slides that we typically see on the Mercers.
Those typically are stormwater utility projects, where we're adding to the existing drainage system in the right-of-way or dealing with water courses that are erosive and undercutting.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
I'm sorry, I have one more question, Mr. Mayor.
No, please.
Sorry. On page 13, you talk about two claims in '80, '84 for $11,700. Is that the culvert on Benotho Place Dry, or Benotho Place? Is that that culvert?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'll have to get back to you on that.
And the reason I ask is because I saw during our last big rainfall where that culvert was still overflowing. It looked to be threatening the house that was just downstream from it. Actually, if you'll get, just get back with me on that, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the council. Does someone like to?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt Resolution Number 1439, completing the update of the Mercer Island Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you again. Here we go. Officer of the Year.
Officer of the Year.
Okay. All right. With that, we are through with regular business. We go on to other business. First of all, we have council absences. We have two absences. Is there a motion to?
To, oh, yeah.
To excuse?
Yeah, I will move that we excuse Comrades Grous and Grady.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the planning schedule. You had an opportunity to look through the planning schedule. Any comments?
I've got a question. March 7th, inter-local agreements with SCORE in Snoomish County. What is, what or who?
Those are for jail services. Those are for jail services, and so I'm working with the police department on just renewing jail services. In fact, I've.
SCORE is an acronym for?
I can tell you exactly what it stands for. I know you don't like acronyms.
No, it wouldn't fit on the line, is curious.
I know, I heard of it, yeah.
Any other questions?
The executive session, will that be our annual update? Is that why that is there?
Which?
On March 7th, on March 7th. Is that our annual update? Is that our annual update? Okay.
Okay.
And yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. On March 22nd, I will be absent that time, and I'm wondering if there, is there any flexibility, if we could move the study session to another time, or would that create a huge problem with planning?
We will see what we can do.
Thank you.
Rich, by the way, Rich, as you might know, is not here this evening. His mother-in-law has passed away, and he's in DC tending to the funeral. Okay, so we will touch base with Rich on that.
Also, I will be absent April 4th and May 2nd.
Okay. April 4th?
April 4th and May 2nd.
Ellie, on May 2nd, you're going to miss BikePed Plan. Sure you want to miss that?
I thought we did that already.
I don't know. I just see PBF, Plan Implementation Discussion.
I missed the Shoreline Master Program Update, too.
Study session, yeah.
Oh, a study session. Well, I trust we'll leave it in your capable hands, Bruce.
I'm sure I can make a mess of that. Mr. Mayor, I would just remind you that I will be absent from the next meeting. It's already on the list of absences, but I will not be here.
Any other absences, future absences, or whatever? Okay, none, all right. So we move on to board appointments. We have none. Councilmember reports. Jane, we'll start you. You've already given, do you have any others you'd like to say? You're now ETP also.
Yes, I went to my first ETP meeting a couple weeks ago, followed by the Sustainability Subcommittee, and I'm learning a lot of very useful information. I hope to be very active and participatory after I've learned a little bit.
And the Arts Council?
Yes. So I really don't have a report from those, and the Arts Council was very, very great. Real, it's a good group. I'm very pleased with my assignments.
Great.
And I've heard a rumor that I'm on the utility board.
You are. By their request. You did such a good job. You were requested. Great. Mike?
I just have kind of a comment or observation. I was at Pete's Chevron station the other day, just kind of hanging out, as you do in a small community, at the service station, and Pete brought up that some folks were, obviously were enforcing the no dogs in the South Mercer Playfields areas, and all is going well, and our officers are just issuing warnings, except when maybe somebody becomes somewhat confrontational, then a ticket's issued. And I just ask the citizens out there to recognize, officers aren't necessarily pleased to have to enforce that rule, but with their professionalism, they're doing the best job that they can, and they are doing the job that we're asking them to do. So I ask the citizens out there to respect the officers and the performance of their duties, and also respect the rule that we have down there at the South Mercer Playfields.
Bruce?
Let's see. I sit on the school's Future Facility Planning Committee, and would just note that the process has been going on with regular meetings and a lot of information flowing to the participants. At this point, the talk is of beginning to have some public information sessions, and you will be seeing, I think there'll be an effort to get before council in the not-too-distant future, although there isn't a timing for that yet, as well as you'll see that they're beginning to have conversations with the broader public. That is not to say that they have a direction yet. What they have is a lot of information and the feeling that they want to make sure the public has some sense of what information they've got before they really enter into scenario and option picking. It's really too early to even call it option picking, but even option identification. So, early days, lots of ideas floating around, starting to, you know, become a conversation rather than just information gathering, but you'll be seeing more of it in the coming weeks. Sustainability Subcommittee, we've had a couple meetings this year, and working with James and staff, we have spent a bit of time defining a charter for the organization, because it's been a little bit of a unclear definition as to what that group was in the past. I think we've gotten some good work done on that, and begun to work on a work plan for the year. And we've set regular meetings, which is something we were having struggles with in the past. So I think things are moving forward reasonably well with that. And I have one other one, which I'm forgetting right now. If it strikes me in the next few seconds, I'll give it to you and otherwise pass for right now. Oh, I know what it is. The Green Ribbon Commission and the Carbon Challenge. There is talk at the next meeting of actually bringing perhaps an electric car in advance of the council meeting, so that those council members who come early could go for a drive and check off a challenge element, just for fun, in advance of the meeting. So whether that will actually happen or not is a little bit in play still, but keep your ears open, and if you've got the flexibility to come a little bit early and play around with that, please consider it.
Thanks. And as far as, for me, I went down to the Association of Washington City's Legislative Session, and they're working primarily on a bunch of legislation about trying to give cities more flexibility in using REIT and other revenues for the city, which is important. They're also working on the public records requests and trying to get that under control. They're also working on just a slew of different, I would say, flexibility issues on local city government, which has really had a devastating effect on some city budgets around the state. So more to come, and we'll see what happens. The other thing is that I would say once again, I think it would be appropriate that April's, Rich's wife's April, mom passed away, her father's still alive in DC, and I know that if you want to share your condolences or anything, that would be well-received. So with that, Rich will be back a week from now, isn't that right, James? They're anticipating next Sunday?
Yes.
Okay, and so anything's going on, James is our contact during that time period.
One thing I'd like to mention, just to tag on to Bruce, we did permit our first residential home with an electric charging station, so good news. What we have is an over-the-counter and web-based permit, so people can come in and do that and get a permit the same day or the next day to do something like that, if they need to get an electric charger put in their home.
Not to be totally facetious about that, but literally I do have a question about, it seems to me that in a home, in individual, single-family residence, isn't it just like plugging it into an outlet, or is there something more than plugging whatever it is from the electric car into an outlet? Does it have to be of the size and strength and order of magnitude of, as a gas dryer or something like that, or electric dryer?
That's an excellent question. The new charging units, which is the Level 2 charging unit, is a 240 30A. So it's similar to a hot water heater or an electric range, so it's a little bit of a boost in your power box. But there are some other issues related to just safety and building safety, to make sure. Some vehicles, based on, not again too much detail, but some vehicles, based on their batteries, may require more ventilation than other vehicles. So they've got to look at the whole garage and make sure that it's safe and permitted. But that can be done very quickly.
But this is an over-the-counter permit, and does that, do we send an inspector out on every over-the-counter permit?
If necessary, yes.
I have just one more thing, too. In addition to the new Arts Council banners that are going up downtown, there are, on the sides of some of the buildings downtown, book cover posters that are showing up on the sides of buildings promoting reading. It's a King County Library effort promoted by the Chamber of Commerce, and it adds some color downtown and promotes reading.
With that, anything else? Okay, then that officially ends our council meeting tonight. Thanks, everybody.